Meeting, come to order. Here.
Here.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a number three discussion on possible approval of minutes for March ten twenty twenty five from Missionary. I make a motion to approve this statement.
Yes.
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 I have number four. Discussion, we're not gonna leave down there.
We can either way.
Discussion and possible action on an address to the board by Patrick Brown on a section line in Eastman issue as well as an approach and town home permit application.
So I have an application right here. It's at section seven north, section fifteen, section ten, seven north, seven west. It's just north here about eight miles. So you're gonna get an E-bill on the section line for a landlocked property that's along the Washatah, it's right in there. The argument is uh, you go off North Fourth Street or off? Off twenty eight fifty, yeah. Twenty eight fifty and thirteen thirty technically would be the cross right there. So that's ours. Can't remember where, I maybe talked to you last year. I think so, I'm not on town or, yeah, there was a twenty four.
Are you just getting it approved, is that what you're?
Yeah, for the approach, we're, because if I understand correctly, what I researched last year was that the county would not open it and maintain it because it's about twenty five hundred feet. So what we're trying to understand is can we build the approach and then we ourselves, because we're the only ones at the end of the road, can we do that? Or because it sits on the section line, does it have to be the county that does that? We don't know, that's what I'm trying to do.
He owns land back behind.
And it's landlocked by the Washatah. So our neighbor currently is trying to block us from access. We do not have passing rights through his land whatsoever. This section line over the last fifty, sixty years was not used by the previous tenant, but we had verbal permission across his land to get to ours because we have two different sections of land that are landlocked. So one's about an eight acre parcel down south and then another eight acre, ten acre parcel up north. So you had to kind of take two split roads to get to it. That all sold and the new owner is not gonna allow us to use any of those.
This sounds a lot like the deal that we just did up at.
Can we have a, can we, can we table this and look at this? Normally these are brought to our county barns and we have time to look over everything. So can we table, can we table this or take no action and?
I would take no action because then that way we can, if we take no action, we can reword the, the agenda item appropriately because I don't think it's worded where we could take any kind of action on this right now. And there's, there's some paperwork to actually fill out and stuff too.
Okay.
That way we can have time to look it over.
So maybe just another next week or two weeks from now, okay. No problem.
It'll be, it'll be a, these two that.
Is your contact information on that?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
No action.
Item five, discussion and possible action on presentation with Thomas and Caleb Smith with proactive security solution about safety and security enhancements for all of Grady County properties.
Thank you for taking, giving us a few minutes to make you aware of some of the things that we do to help with health, safety, security products for Oklahoma institutions. We do law work for school districts, currently serving about ten counties with, with some of our products. You know, you have a brochure there in front. We believe that based on our due diligence that we have some of the best market products on the market, the impact security for the ballistic products, motorola solutions, errors for the air purification. But primarily, I think we just wanted to make you aware of our ballistic products. We've done some of that for a county here in Oklahoma and probably one or two schools here in, here in Oklahoma as well. So I'm gonna let Caleb kind of explain to you some of the products.
So we offer kind of a tiered solution to trying to protect you, your employees and any occupants in your buildings. You know, your primary entry point for someone who's trying to cause harm, an active shooter, intruder, it's usually gonna be an entryway or any glass. And those are such vulnerable targets that anyone who has a little time and the power can get right through. So we offer solutions to either slow that down or even completely prevent that from happening. So this security window film, it's similar to like tints you'd put on your car except it's much thicker. It's designed to slow down entry into a building. You can still shoot a bullet right through it, but even after shooting it, the glass stays together and some of it has to be on it for a long time depending on how thick of an application you were going with. So it buys you time for first responders to engage the situation and stop the threat. But we also have other products like this one. It's a patented product, a polycarbonate shield. It's called Defense Light. When you put that over your glass, they cannot get through it. It's two hundred and fifty times stronger than glass. It's designed to go right over your existing frames so you don't have to have downtime or the, the cost of construction to reframe a building. It's very optically clear and you can shoot through it, beat it with a sledgehammer and you will not penetrate it. Then there's product like this, Bullet Shield, that will stop bullets. That one's a level three. It'll stop forty-four Magnum and below.
This one there?
This one.
This one.
So we actually have that in a couple of schools around the state. We even have that in Ottawa County Courthouse up in Miami. They were concerned about their judges, their district attorneys' safety. And so all the transaction windows where they deal with angry people coming in and out, we outfitted them with that product right there along with the bullet resistant deal trays so that they can still conduct a business as usual without having that threat of their life from someone who's upset at them. So that's kind of a few different options that, that we, we do and we just wanted to make you guys aware of that and I let you know, we'd be happy to work with you, give you, all of our estimates are free. So if you want to talk more about that, if you have any questions, would like to see an estimate on a project, we'd be happy to do that for you.
The laminate that goes over, what, what, what's it rated at?
As far as like?
What caliber?
So there is no security window film on the market that would stop bullets. They're not designed to do that. You just, even if you get it real thick, about fifty millimeters, so it's still only, you know, within. It's not designed for that at all. It's just supposed to delay entry into the building. That's primarily what we use for schools. They have limited budgets. They just want to buy time for first responders to get there. And so we would just put that on there. But we do hybrid situations as well. You know, sometimes it might make sense to have a product like this on your doors, your entryways, because that's the primary target, and then have security film on the windows. Bullet Shield, maybe that's just for, like I mentioned, you know, specific areas where we're trying to keep some occupants safe. But that options are really limitless. We can do whatever you can think of. We can even do a tinted security film. So you get the added benefits of solar reduction but also limiting visibility into your building along with it slowing down, delaying entry into a building.
This view scan, is that like people walking through?
Yeah, it's like what you have up front.
Kind of what we have right up front. We are looking at trying to start a remodel project and I think we could give this to Willowbrook. I know when Robin was doing her office, we had a hard time finding anybody with any kind of bulletproof stuff for the treasurer's office.
And if you're starting, if you're remodeling, you're starting from scratch, we even have ballistic rated doors. We even have a product that goes in the drywall that can stop a bullet just like that. So depends how much you, you feel that you need, but we can really give you a real safe area.
Do you have any current counties using it now?
Ottawa County right now is starting a bullet shield product. We're not in yet, but we're working with Delaware County as well. Those are the only ones we currently have this product in. We are working with several other counties with air purification. We do, in fact, I think we've quoted Grady County for that once. So that's kind of how our, our main work has been with counties is the air purification side. We're in over fifty some schools here in Oklahoma with our different products as well.
We've primarily been focusing on schools, but now we're shifting to the counties because at the ICAU trade shows, we can get a lot of interest in these products, so we're moving in that direction. We're based here in Oklahoma, our office is in Tuttle. On that view scan? Take a lot of time here, but the unique thing about that is it takes a photo of everyone that comes through and it pinpoints the location of the, the device that they have there, so.
Yeah, we, we definitely need something a little speedier than what we have downstairs.
We have, um, there's a SRO training at Sheriff's Office here this week and we're providing lunch for them today and do a little presentation similar to this. But we actually have a panel of this, about four by three foot mounted on a stand and we got a sledgehammer. So you're welcome to come down and see it in action or take some frustration out if you want.
Depends how the meeting goes.
But if there's no other questions, we'll let you guys get on.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, item number six, discussion and possible action on reports from the Emergency Management Director.
Well, as most of you probably already know, we're, uh, we are. Uh, we are under red flag warning again today. I'm sure we'll be under one tomorrow too. Fortunately, we're still gonna have southwest winds sustained in fifteen, twenty miles an hour, but the gust won't finish by the half sun. Their weather service is predicting gust, you know, forty, forty-five miles an hour, maybe periodically up around fifty, but it's not quite as bad as what the, uh, the conditions were Friday. So we'll be monitoring.
How far are we from being in the criteria to put fire ban on?
I looked at the drought monitor today. We had some slight drought in Southern Third. That rain that we got the week before and all that stuff put it back just in normal rain. So I think, I'm gonna do some checking. There, there was a lot of talk at a press conference that the government had, the other, we haven't got yet, and man, from about county commissioners having the ability of issuing burn bans for their county if they sit there.
Probably have things to be for.
But that's, I think that's a legislative deal. I don't think, you know, under the current statutes, there are things you can't do with that stuff.
That's kind of what I read. I, I did some research on last year because we had some fire chiefs that were putting their own burn bans out, so I kind of did some, yeah, that research on it last year and I think it's, it's, they're about to have some changes with the legislature, but we can do that.
I mean, this police can, can issue burn bans, you know, for their municipalities.
Right.
Like Will did up there in Tuttle, you know, and Tony did here, they don't allow any kind of burning, which, but we actually had somebody, actually had a total burn Friday morning.
Holy cow.
When all this was out. Luckily Rodney and the crew got out there pretty quick. You know, I think our first fire of the call, our day was like seven thirty in the morning over to Ellie. So, but as far as today, we're going, we're still gonna monitor quite closely, just like we did Friday and everything. And the good thing about last Friday, we didn't lose any structures. I talked to Rodney, I talked to some of the fire chiefs and stuff and we, you know, one few reported structures lost in our county. So we fared real good. The call come out and we found a high pinpoint just exactly where the fire started. And I knew the area where it was going, that's the reason why we issued the warning that we did, especially to the residents over there on the Off Country Club Road, because we sure didn't want to have something like that happen like that with up in Stillwater. So.
Dale, was that directed?
Yes, if, if power, power lines aren't together.
Yeah.
Yes, have it up there on, on the corner of Mockingbird ninety-two.
That's where I live.
So, but anyway, uh, we was activated, or EOC was activated level two. We actually had a state representative there from Emergency Management and Amanda was manning that and I was interfacing with the incident commander out on scene, so. But we'll, we'll be monitoring it in the next few days and everything, but chances look a little better Wednesday and Thursday. But still don't have a lot of chances of any rain or anything, but we could get a little bit here and there, but we'll keep it fast.
Thank you. Kim?
Picking up off what he said a little bit, um, Grady County was called out to eighteen different fire calls, um, on Friday. They, then after that ninety-two and Mockingbird fire got shut down, then they looked, then they went to Lindsay. So outside of Grady County, it was cement and Lindsay that they responded to Friday afternoon. Saturday, they took eleven trucks to Little Axe on a strike team. And right now, we've got three trucks at Leedy. They left last night nine o'clock, they should be home mid-morning in case anything go off the bed breaks out here. I have to brag on them, I'm not a firefighter, so I can brag on them, but they, they don't like to be bragged on. But we had about ten to twelve volunteers that took off Friday, their normal job to stay at their stations and take care of us.
It sounded like I was listening to it all day long and, I mean, when something would pop off, they'd swarm it. I mean, I think it's, I think that's why we didn't have no more problems than what we had, so.
The one at cement, they pulled off a bit to go on at Naples and they were over by Lindsay, you know, sort of, but they pulled off that because it was out of county and they needed to get back into county. We do, we really do. And.
You just can't beat them.
Along with all that, then they had training yesterday at one o'clock. And there was, I don't know exactly how many, I haven't, they haven't returned my call, but I think it was like eight to ten that responded to that training at a firework yesterday.
Well, I'm gonna give a shout out because I went over to Emergency Management Friday afternoon to see if I could get them something, I couldn't do anything for them, but to give them something. Dale's office was running like clockwork. Kim, I don't know how she does it back there. The nine-one-one dispatchers?
Yes.
It was a, well, old machine that I saw Friday afternoon and I'm, I'm very proud of our employees and our firefighters and it was just amazing what I saw over there.
It is pretty amazing. Sometimes they're just big goons, but then you see them go into action and you're like, God, I don't know exactly what you're doing. Anyway, here's our agenda for our board meeting tomorrow night. Hopefully we'll be able to have it. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
While we're still on the subject, I'm glad Charles is here for this question. I've, I've been asked if, uh, say a fire happens just over the line over in Caddo County or, uh, Comanche County and, uh, the fires, a bad fire like the one we just had, and there are possibility of structures being, homes being burned. And they request Grady County if they could come over with a motor grader, a bulldozer to assist them in cutting fire breaks and, uh, in a situation like that, how would you think that it would be okay for us to go over in the county, emergency situation?
Yep. It falls under the, uh, State Mutual Aid Compact.
Right, okay.
That's.
And that's, that's, that's what I thought.
We, we have that in, it's in one of the last pages of our emergency operating plan.
Okay.
That's, it's just like the fire departments, for example, Leedy up there calls, they need a strike, we can go up there, you know, as long as we're requested. You know, and it's through the state or the county or something like that, so.
We did last year, Canadian County had a fire and they were, their graders, we had to go all the way around to the bridges, but ours was five miles away, so we just loaded up and went.
I just want to verify that I've been asked that question.
Documentation is key because a lot of these things, you know, we've requested FMAG zone, which is Fire Management Assistant Grants.
Yeah.
It's available through FEMA. And just like Rodney and going to couple, then they've already had a FMAG for Leedy. So this, what I try to tell the fire departments and county, documentation is key because, you know, if you want reimbursement under an FMAG, which is what the public section can get, you know, fuel costs, damages, stuff like that, you know, you have to have them reports and equipment documented, who was there, what time was there and all that. So just remember to tell our people to document everything.
The Nord fire was also designated as FMAG.
So the Nord fire, the highway ninety-two and Mockingbird fire.
The cost of the amount, a lot of times we can request as emergency management or anything like that, we can request an FMAG, but the conditions, it has to be active, there has to be uncontrolled, the fire's going on, it has to be active, and there has to be a certain amount of homes that are in the path of that if it wasn't get out, which, you know, the area over there, uh, South Country Club Road and everything, we'll put that in the qualification section. So we have to, we have to monitor that and ask for that ahead of time to, or request a state, you know, request a FEMA that we have an FMAG on, on a certain fire. And there was quite a few Friday.
All right, thank you. Uh, Bobby.
And again, uh, just to give you back, it was, it was awesome. I was out there at, um, Tremetsch, which, and, um, just to see all our entities collaborate together and work together, I mean, it was amazing. We had the city maintenance, the city chicken shade, sheriff department, and, and they were all working together, doing whatever they need to do, whether it's flying or whatever and directing traffic. And it was, um, you know, it was good to do, see that, you know. They did a great job and again, Kim.
I'll tell them, I've already told them, I'll tell them again.
I'm not a firefighter, so I don't go into their fire, but they did a great job. Well, I've been conducting a safety meeting with the, I conducted a safety meeting this morning with this three and we'll be doing dispatch this evening. I'll come over this evening and do one with them. Mike, Phil, Fred and Dale and I completed our class four power industry truck training, uh, class force last week. I'll be conducting a safety rotation for one district for his new hire. And then I'll be attending the ICAU safety conferences Wednesday and Thursday at, at ICAU. Below are some areas that I went out and there was some trees that were down and I went and cut them down and moved them off the road. This photo is the, uh, outside of the, uh, Emergency Management and Action Board. When we did the parking lot, uh, before that, we didn't have the sidewalk there, so I didn't put the parking blocks back on there and they can use that curb. But since, uh, we put that sidewalk there and there's been, gonna be a new elec, uh, big election coming up for people first, I thought that we could put, go ahead and put those blocks up. If we do, it'll put it, pretty much put that, uh, vehicle way behind there, that parking where they can utilize that sidewalk real easy and I had to go around like that, uh, burgundy SUV there. And so I talked to Rick and, and Mike and they're gonna also look and see if maybe we have some extras at the barn roof. And I talked to John, John said to go back there and look and we just need nine of, nine of them and we can, uh, go ahead and get those down and, and be able to utilize that. So that's all I have for you guys.
I might have some extra too, just some block, blocks at the, at our shop, so I might estimate that kind of exactly what we're.
Okay, Michael probably called it in chat before this. Thank you.
Kim?
We walked with the architects Thursday and Friday of last week. They measured every wall, every room, every closet from the bottom to the top, every piece of furniture, this desk, they're gonna make a new. The plans that we have don't have any remodels that have happened from the original set of plans. So this first step is to get an idea of what we have. They talked to a few of the elected officials and then they're gonna come up with a plan on what we need as far as storage. And, but he said they'll have a dozen more trips out here before they're ready to make some kind of presentation on, let's go this route or this route. So we're moving in that direction, it's just gonna be a little.
I think he said it's gonna be that's probably a six month study.
Yeah, well, they were here two solid days with the tape measure, measuring everything. And then Mike's carpet is done, that second floor looks a lot better now.
I would just like to reiterate, no matter what the money we're using, whether it be budgeted money or general fund money, if you're doing a remodel, you need to go through Mike because there's people that are not doing that. And Mike is, that's the reason we hired Mike to do that and he's the one that's supposed to get the quotes and everything. And, uh, so I just wanna reiterate that that's what we hired Mike, Mike for and we need to make sure everybody's doing that. Because I think it's, he's being overlooked and overstepped and, and we need him involved in that. We don't want any buildings falling down because somebody hired somebody else to cut into a wall.
All right. Doing good, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Item number seven, public comments, comments from the public will be limited to two minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the board. If anybody has anything to say, address the board. No comments. Item eight, new business, importance without open meeting act title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, three eleven, page nine. New business is defined as any matter not known or not known about or which should not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda. Any new business from the board?
I got none.
Um, we, we just know, there's, uh, Mike and I talked about it Friday. He took the people from CMS Willowbrook around. Gary wants to do some remodeling in his building and it is a, it is a load bearing wall and he's gonna have to get a structural engineer out there to look at it before he does anything.
Yeah, the architect went over there with me and he said, he recommended, before we do anything, we need a structural engineer to come to look at it. He said he wouldn't recommend cutting holes in that wall without an engineer drawing something up first.
That's why I want to make sure Mike's involved in everything that's being done so that we don't do something wrong.
Item nine, discussion and possible approval to accept a bid from Dexter Blake for the following properties. Parcel ID C zero zero one dash zero zero dash one one four dash zero zero one dash zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero, comma, TID number twenty-two oh six and the amount of four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Parcel ID C zero zero one dash zero zero dash one one four dash zero zero two dash zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero. TID number twenty-two twenty-two zero seven and the amount of five hundred and thirty dollars.
Ron, where are these located?
They are at two fifteen North Twelfth Street and two twenty-seven North Twelfth Street. And the bids that he placed were the minimum, was the minimum amounts that the county needs, what we, what we've actually, money we've actually been out. And the bids that he placed were the minimum, um, was the minimum amounts that the county needs, what we, what we've actually, money we've actually been out.
Do you think this is anything the county would ever wanna?
I, I think it bears looking at, I do, I think you need to maybe see, I'm not familiar with where it's at, but, um, I think it would be worth driving by and looking at to make sure of it, because, you know, we've got into that before and
Yeah, we got.
Should've held on to it, and we didn't.
Can we take no action till we next week? And that way, maybe we can go by and see if it's something the county might be interested in keeping.
North Twelfth?
North Twelfth.
So is that down there by the, I guess that's probably down there by the vote tech or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we oughta.
Cause it might be, okay.
Okay.
No, uh, no action.
So I mean, if, if nothing else, we probably, before we sell it to somebody, if we can't use it, we're gonna talk to the vote tech, as fast as their building, if they wanna
Right, right.
Use it for another parking lot.
Cause I think Sydney's, yeah, got a bid on that one.
I just say from here on out, with these tips coming in, I think we need to, might wanna check, check it out, the location of it prior to.
I agree. What was the address, is two fifteen North Twelfth and?
Two twenty-seven.
Uh, we just take no action.
No action.
Take no action.
Item number ten, discussion and possible action on purchase of property ordering to Pioneer Fire Station to the north. Proposed purchase price is fifty-three thousand dollars.
This be an executive session item?
Yeah, I think it is.
Need to strike that for next week or some other time, man, I don't have an executive session.
No action to put it on for?
It's a session.
Okay, so this executive session's in here now, it's not for that?
No.
Oh, it's not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Item number eleven, discussion and possible awarding a table bid for a fenced parking lot for Grady County.
We go with these three, that's the amount. The next cheapest con- concrete guy is the second amount, or there's a complete project for one ninety-nine.
So Coffee Post Oak ASG is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight thirty-six. Or Walsh Post Oak and ASG is a one forty-six, six seventy.
Our discount was completed.
Or Elkhorn for the entire project is one ninety-nine, nine sixty-five.
And this is just part of the project, this is not?
There will still need digi, we'll have to come and put the
So this?
Key partners and, this is everything that should carry.
That's security, so this, so we still probably have another?
I'm not sure what digi will be.
Okay. So this parking lot's gonna run us between a hundred and thirty-five thousand, probably two hundred thousand.
Well, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't think digi would be that.
Net high?
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would be that high.
Six or so.
Sounds like a fifty-ten somewhere there. So.
And is that all that you know we need?
Everything on the scope of work falls into, everybody that bid it, bid it by the scope, so.
Okay, so, so if we go, if we do this, then all we have is security.
If we do low bid, it will still happen, say that again?
If we do low bid, then we just have the security cameras left to put on?
And, yes, and ASG was, have bid running extra condu for future, for the security, for cameras if they decide to add it. And we're gonna pull an extra condu under the road, just to be safe, so we don't have to do it again in the future.
So you don't, you don't foresee us having to tear something else out, out, out to put something else in?
There'll be step ups for future, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the low bids, Coffee Post Oak ASG.
Same here.
Gary.
Yes.
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 Okay, item number twelve, exec- executive session, proposed executive session pursuant to twenty-five open statutes, three oh seven, these three. Item for plain discussion and possible action and items discussed in the executive session.
Okay, so, uh, we, uh, approved a purchase of the land and building. So Barn, uh, District Two's Barn sits on land that was, uh, that is owned by the Grady County Industrial Authority. And we've been there since nineteen ninety-three, and the county has never owned that property. So we are going to purchase that property, industrial authority wanted what they paid for, and in nineteen ninety-three, they paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we are going to pay them a hundred and twenty-five thou- thousand dollars to get the property in Grady County's name. Finally, after thirty-some years.
Few years.
So I make a motion that we, um, we approve the payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the Grady County Industrial Authority for District Two.
Say.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
I'm gonna take that building over, that old place, since it's in my district.
Well, whenever, you know, we build a new barn and
Hey, you'd go be the building first.
Yeah, yeah. Let us build your building first, yeah.
So we're getting satellites, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, item fifteen, discussion and possible approval about dating the county-owned vehicle agreement policy.
Okay, I put this on the agenda, this is a twofold form, so, um, we've been talking to the, uh, the accountant that does our payroll. And we are in violation of IRS code, because we are not putting, uh, the county vehicles on for people that are driving their vehicles back and forth. Because they do have a county vehicle, they do have a small bit of probably personal use, they can, you know, stop off. But if we don't do this, the IRS can come back and find the county for the people's benefit that they should have. It's, it's a small benefit, I mean, Mike and I kinda talked about it, you know, he uses the toll, he, you know, it's, it's very small, it's minimal. But there's also on here, uh, and everybody signs off on this, on, when they, when they read the county handbook, they sign off on this. So they've literally really already signed off on this. It just never has been put in place, that, that county never has done it. And also, they sign off that they're not going to have any of their family members or, or unauthorized people in their vehicle. And as we heard from Dusty Burdson last week.
Right.
It is a liability to the county. And I've had numerous people call me, say, you can't believe I saw so-and-so pull up and the whole family got out of their car. Um, we can't have that liability. Everybody needs to know that that, that's a no-no, and what Charles and I do, and Jason talked about, is that we get everybody sign one now, and at the first of the year, everybody signs one. Just that way, if there's a wreck and you got your wife in your car, and we go to court, we can pull this out and say, mm-mm, you, you literally signed this. So, Charles and Jason have been, are, uh, good with it. Um, it's just something that we just haven't done, because we have forced the issue. Um, I'm a hundred percent for it, cause if you tell me the IRS is gonna find me for something.
Right.
You're born, you pay your taxes, and you die, and I don't mess with IRS.
I've got a question.
Mm-hmm.
One of the architects were here last week, and we went to lunch, and we all went to lunch, and I picked up.
Okay, you, you had him in there for a county, you were, he was there on county business. You were, you didn't have him just riding around in your truck. I had, um, Representative Cole's guy in mind and in, in our truck the other day. It's official business, you had him in there on official business. It's just like, you know, dropping your kids off at school or whatever, you just can't, we can't do that, it's, it's a liability. And so, if it's official business, you're okay.
Right.
But Dusty did tell us last week, it is a liability, if we go to court, we can, we can, you know, be sued for that, and if we can prove that they knew they weren't supposed to have their family, at least maybe we might have a leg to stand on.
Yeah, and if a person goes to work, and they sign this book, there's all, other, tons of stuff in the book.
Yeah.
And then five years later, I mean, they didn't even have to contemplate driving a car when they got, to work. And they finally got a car, and five years later, they, too much time is spent as far as communicating that. And you could put somebody on the stand and convince a jury that they honestly did not understand that that was an issue five years later, when they were initially hired and they didn't, they weren't driving anything anyway. Doing it once a year, separate from the handbook, smart. So, yeah, this is what we were talking about in the week, last week.
So I make a motion that we hand this out to everybody, everybody that has a county vehicle, signs it. I mean, you, if you, the ones of us that do, that prevent our vehicles, we pay taxes on that every month. I mean, you know, it's just, it's a small, like I said, they've got three or four different bases into it.
Yeah.
And right before they get ready to do
Yeah.
the tax stuff, in November, December, Deanne will come up here and help Keely and Jennifer figure out which bases they follow. It's, it's pretty near today, from what I understand, you know, talking to Ricky and ACO and, and Deanne, it's, it's a small amount.
Okay, I'll second that.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, item number sixteen, discussion and possible approval of the Grady County served five-year plan. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes. No. Uh, yeah, you better make, you better make all three of us talk to you, all three of us were involved in that.
Item number seventeen, discussion and possible critical of the tableled item of an inter-local agreement between Grady County District Three and Rush Springs Public School District. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Okay, item number nineteen, discussion, possible approval of disposal of, no, 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 no. Discussion and possible approval of the tabled item of an inter-local agreement between Grady County District Three and Elkhorn Public School District. And I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item nineteen, discussion and possible approval of disposal of equipment for District One in accordance with the provisions set forth in Title Nineteen, Section Four Twenty-One. Make a motion to, oh, I'll make a motion, okay, second. Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty, discussion and possible approval of disposal of equipment for District Two in accordance with the provisions set forth in Title Nineteen, Section Two Forty-One.
Make a motion.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline, road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway can-hole permits. We have three in here.
I did dig it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
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 Okay, item twenty-two, discussion and possible approval of blanket purchase orders, make a motion to approve.
Yes, I got a question about a few of them. I don't know if I should take these to Sydney when I see them, when they send them to me. But when I see pe- when I see payments to the same vendor for the same amounts, it looks like to me somebody's splitting, splitting, so I, I don't know, but there's three cops that are twenty-four hundred apiece. And I don't know if we're splitting them up, so we don't have to get quotes, but when I look at that, I'm gonna assume the auditors are gonna look at that and see the same thing. So I don't, I don't know, and then we've got some big payments to the senior citizens, and I, I don't know what those are out of sales tax. It's like, Minko Senior Citizens Activity Fund were twelve thousand dollars. Rush Springs Senior Citizen Association, thirty-five hundred. Rush Springs Senior Citizen Wednesday Account, four thousand. Burden Senior Citizen Council, eighty-five hundred. I don't know what these are, what do they, why are we writing checks out of sales tax to their?
I bet you that Minko Senior is probably, their concrete that they're getting right now.
Okay.
Is my guess.
Okay.
Cause they just tore up my shit, yeah.
Um, I think the best thing for you to do is before the meeting to have her pull the POs.
Okay.
That way you'll know exactly.
Okay.
I'm betting the cops is probably outfitting new, new cops.
And I, and it probably is, it just, when I see the same amount
Yeah.
three times, I'm, I'm thinking of splitting stuff up.
That's about what it costs to outfit a That's about what it costs to outfit a brand-new, brand-new.
They may have state bid.
Huh?
They may have state bid.
And they, they might have, I'm just, you know, I'm just looking at them and questioning.
Well, I know what you're saying, uh, uh, those senior citizens sometime they come in like that, uh, large amount. It's salaries.
Okay.
And their groceries are phenomenal.
Yeah, no, I see a lot of the grocery, I didn't question any grocery, cause I, you know, kinda know that, but I'm just like.
The Wednesday account is different, I mean, that's to pay their rent on that building, Rush Springs.
We don't own the building?
Uh-huh.
So why are we paying rent?
Now, uh, Rush Springs, yeah, it thirty-five, I think it's thirty-five hundred a month.
So why, why?
They, they, when, that's a independent, that's independent. And that's, they started that, when they were, Rush Springs Senior Citizens started out, they started that, and they've been doing it ever since.
Well, I'm gonna.
Yes, I, I know, I'm, I know.
I'm gonna ask state auditor about that, cause we, we own the building.
Yeah, ask him.
We own the building, and we shouldn't be paying rent on something we already own.
Thirty-five hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, and they've been doing it for years.
You may get called, cause I'm gonna question it, because I don't, that's, I don't think you should be taking from sales tax and paying for a building that we, they own, that, I mean, it was given to them, wasn't it?
No.
No, um, does county own it?
No.
Who owns the building?
I think it's Merlin Rush.
It's the Senior Citizens Association.
Uh.
I think it's the association, and it's what it's.
Yeah, but I mean, if the senior citizens owns it, I don't think we should be paying rent for it.
No, they don't own, I don't think they own it, I don't think senior citizens.
I thought at one time, years ago, that it was, it was given to the senior citizens. I don't, I'm gonna check into it, cause I, I don't feel like sales tax money, that taxpayer's sales tax money should be paying rent on a building if it's owned by the county or the senior citizens. So, I, yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, well.
I hear, I'm, I, I, I understand.
Do you know anything about that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that would be the best way to handle those, anyway, is.
Yeah.
Okay.
She, she, all she has to do is just print them.
Okay. I think I got those on Friday, that I didn't have enough time.
And, uh, Betty Sellers, is there a board chair down there?
Uh-huh.
I've got her phone number, I'll be glad to get it to you and call her.
Okay.
She'll explain it.
Okay.
Mike's already gone. Thought how much we just, just threw, we built a new building, bus barn for them down there, for their bus.
Yeah.
And, uh, their little, uh, four-wheel drive delivery vehicle.
Yeah.
And, uh, that was quite a bit of money too.
Okay, okay, well, make a motion to approve.
Okay. Uh, that's on the purchase orders, right?
Mm-hmm.
I love it, there is.
Yeah, we need to do the blankets first.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, the blanket, okay, I made a motion to approve on the blanket. And Ruth seconded, is that right?
Yeah.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-three, review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during deterrent and previous funds and authorize or deny payment of such purchases.
Okay, so we have a partial payment to Western Aggregate for district one, um, for Crusher Run. Uh, it is. Thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-seven eighty-two. And then, um, partial payment to Apprentice, which this is the, uh, it's, uh, consultation on services for the assessor, so this is the assessor's, um, program they have. Uh, they wanna pay partial payment at ten thousand. Yeah, uh, we owe them twenty, they owe them twenty, they want a partial payment of ten thousand for the services that they've started. Yeah, we do have with Apprentice, yeah, we approved it about two months ago.
Yeah, they approved partial payment.
Yeah. And then we approved the partial payments, yeah.
Does the contract contemplate partial payment?
I have, no, I have.
I've slipped since then.
Yeah, um, I don't know. It is one of the few, um, software companies they have that do the assessor program. I, I don't know, we'd have to, you want us to call Cindy?
Yeah.
Jill, we need to look at the, um.
I do have partial payments.
Contract. Or. Do you want me to go forward with the wrong POs? Do you want me to go forward with the wrong POs till we find out about their contract? Okay, um, Chickshay Senior Citizen, uh, proper purchasing procedure is not followed to cable meat. They estimated forty-five hundred dollars on groceries, and it went over by a hundred and forty-five thirty-sixths. District one, Corin Maine, order date is before the PO date, fifty-nine forty-four fifteen. Um, Health Department, Public Health, Ernest Williamson, Janitorial Services. PO should've been encumbered before February first, so it wasn't encumbered right, it was for twenty-three fifty. Burden Senior Citizens, procedure not follows, followed invoice dated before PO, um, it's two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Sheriff. Somebody's due, Philip McCarty's active membership dues. What, do you know what FBI LEEDA is?
It's been a long time since I've, but yeah, it's some, some membership that he's classed that he's went to.
Okay.
He's a member of LEDA.
And so, you know.
Law enforcement, education, something around.
Okay, PO is open prior to getting the membership, and that's fifty dollars. Visual inspection, um, wiper fluid for county vehicles. Requisition was turned in at four P M. with invoice and receiver that shows it was done before opening a PO. It was, um, five dollars and fifty-nine cents. And those are all the ones that were possibly purchased.
I think our Corin Maine one was a, uh, was a quote issued, I think that quote.
And, and they issued a PO.
Yeah.
Which that's the problem we have with a lot of county highway stuff, is that you probably give a quote and they.
It automatically generates. Yeah.
Invoice.
So this is like early in the year, where we did all three, which was involved in that, so it probably kind of.
Oh, I got you, oh, I, I got you.
Like, if I can get.
So that's fine.
Yeah.
So if we just, one of the types of class.
I'm sure, I'm about to double check about.
Okay.
Work on something.
Yeah.
The class we went to the same day, the, the class we took the same day that we, uh, our days, didn't do with that work?
I don't know, that ODOT was here, that was the same day ODOT was here.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't know.
Oh, I did, that's, that's, that's that property next door to the Pioneer Fire Department. That's over there, say, don't lose that.
Okay, okay, well.
So you'll need it next meeting.
Okay. Uh, you want to look at that, or want to talk about it next week? Uh, Cindy, we just had a question on the contract for, uh, Apprentice. It, does it say that we will make partial payment? Does it say anything about payment? So Charles, what would I do? Just wanna tap that number.
So I really show her a hundred and twenty-five percent on the, I'm not sure.
Okay, it does, Charles. Okay.
Now it kind of like created.
I think some electricity's off down there or something.
Well, yeah. Bet you know like ours, so. So they can send it for the whole year, and just pay it.
Much easier.
Okay.
So it's okay?
Uh, yeah.
Well, no, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
For, for her out.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve item twenty-three from purchasers.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, discussion and possible approval of county officer's report.
I'll make a motion to approve, Gary.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-five, discussion and possible approval of estimate of needs, request for appropriations, and transfer appropriations, and I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth.
I'll make a motion to the jury.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.